And. I, I am, I'm ready. Have a good meeting.
All right. Thank you, sir. All right. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the August ninth, twenty twenty one Citrus School Committee meeting in response to Governor Baker's declaration of a public health emergency and the related emergency executive order dated March twelfth, twenty twenty. Town and Citra Public School Meeting shall be meet, shall meet remotely until further notice. This meeting will be recorded and will be posted following, following the meeting. It's also streamed on Facebook Live. Public comments will be available through Zoom and community members can also reach out to me at Mlongatit.org with questions. And then just a reminder, any correspondence through any medium can be considered public record between members of the community and the school committee. So this time, and it's called a meeting to order by roll call vote. Brandalini?
Yes.
Gate?
Yes.
Blinblon?
Yes.
And Long? Yes. Okay, so the first item up on the agenda tonight is the football booster fundraising request. Mr. Scott Payne, our new athletic director will present that. Mr. Payne, I know you've been here before, but welcome.
And Mr. Payne can unmute himself. Mr. Payne, do you know how to do that? Yes?
Yes, I just did. Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and it's good to be back here again with some formal business to discuss tonight, so let's get going. The first presentation that we have tonight is regarding some fundraising that's been requested by the football and cheerleading boosters. From what I understand, they work together as a group. What they're asking for is some temporary banner type fundraising that could be hung during the home football games. Their banners that would be hung up one hour before the game and one hour after the game. And this would just be for one year only. In speaking with Mr. Luette and Dr. McGuire, we'd like to get back on track with the fundraising proposal for the video scoreboard. So this would be something that we would be, or the boosters would be seeking these advertisers to do for just one year in hopes that moving forward, we could capture these groups as part of our video scoreboard. So we realize that, you know, this is a different request. I also, you know, want to mention that if this does get approved, and I realize it needs to go through many levels of approval. I think that we need to be prepared for having all of the other athletic groups as well as, you know, the theater arts, music, whoever may want to go down the same road for this year. So I think if this is approved for this group, I do think we need to be prepared to probably field requests from other groups within the district.
This is a sample of what the banners would look like.
And it was, it was Webster Printing that they reached out to, to get the sample banners made. Thoughts from the committee members?
So would it, would it look like just the Webster Printing part? Like, I'm just gonna, the sample banner, I mean, it has Citro High School Athletics, which we know it's Citro High, so would it be just the banner of the company?
So I think, I think what would have to happen if this were, if this were to be approved, no banner would actually be approved until we actually saw a mockup of it. You know, I don't, I don't know how people feel about all the different colors and that type of look and what that would look like on the fencing. You know, if all the banners were uniform color, I think that is much more attractive, but then I realized that some of the potential advertisers or sponsors probably have their own, you know, business colors which they would want to use.
I guess I was picturing like if Webster Printing were to pay to have a banner, it would look just like this and just be hung by the corners.
Yeah, that, that's what they would probably want.
Yeah.
And this is just during games, an hour before and hour after games, and then?
Correct.
The boosters or parent organizations would take them down and store, where are they gonna be? Is there a storage plan or?
I, I would have the ability to store, store them for them. That, that would be okay. But yes, it would be their responsibility to hang them and then remove them and make sure that all the zip ties and whatnot or whatever devices they use to hang the banners are picked up and cleaned up.
So is it?
Is there a standard?
Oh, sorry.
Is there a standard size to these banners?
So there, that's what I would suggest that we make a, you know, like a three by ten or two by ten or whatever we come up with a size that we feel would look right and placed within sections of the fencing. But yeah, I believe that they should all be a uniform size.
But we're not, we're not recommending one at this time.
No, we have been actually gone out and measured like how, how big, we need to go out there and look. I believe Mrs. Sullivan has an actual physical banner that we could do that with and then make adjustments from there.
I have a couple, I guess, general comments. First of all, obviously, I'm, I think, I'm in full support of trying to raise money for our programs. I think it's a great idea. My couple of concerns are the, the timing of this. I'm, I'm assuming, I guess, that some, there's been outreach to some of our potential sponsors to say, if we get this, then we will do it. But has there been any general outreach, do you know, and, and how much money are the boosters anticipating raising for this? Second to that, is this just for varsity games or is it before JV or freshman games? And, and how many games are there? There's just four games, four or five home games?
So speaking for just football, I believe we're split six and five. With Thanksgiving being away, we have, I can't remember off the top of my head, whether it's five or six, which are home, which mean sub varsity would be opposite of that number with the exception of Milton. We're hosting all three Milton games, so we would have an extra sub varsity game. I would be fine for all levels of play. That, that'd be perfectly fine by me. I think that would be more of a school committee decision. And, you know, Mrs. Sullivan and I have spoken several times and I kind of asked her not to reach out to people yet until we saw what direction we thought this may go.
But do you think there's reasonable timing, assuming, you know, if the school committee approves it tonight, then I guess the, the town most likely has to approve it, and then you have to go solicit, then you have to get it printed. Is that reasonable to to have happen, do you think?
Yes, we have plenty of time.
Okay.
So would, um, would a company pay for their banner to be hung for every single home game or is it just like a one-off?
It's a, I think it's a one-time donation there. Now, now, if we wanna, this is where it gets a little bit tricky. So if, if the football and cheerleaders are out soliciting these donations for these banners and then field hockey and soccer hop on and the company decides that they want their banner held, you know, displayed for all sports, then I think that changes the game a little bit and where we would probably come back and ask for additional funds. So I'd have to do some work to, you know, do you want to sponsor one sport or two sport or three sports and then do those other booster groups even want to get involved? That I don't know.
And do you have an area on the football field where these would be?
I would think, would you want to put them across the field and along the fence in front of the visiting bleachers? I think that's where they would be the most visible from the Citro fan base.
Would they be able to see them if the, the, they're visiting football team standing on the other side?
Well, if we, you know, they have to stay between the twenty-five and the twenty-five, the team, so if we move them outside of that.
Okay.
Yeah, what does the fencing look like? Or is the fencing just like three foot or four foot fence on that end or does it go up high? I don't, I don't recall.
It's four foot black chain link.
So you have to put, so it can't be more than four, the, the sign can't be more than four feet tall, so are you even gonna be able to see it?
Right, I'm, you know, probably three feet maximum in height and have it hanging from the very top down.
And, and are you, do you anticipate that the solicitation is gonna be, hey, if you donate five hundred dollars or whatever it is to, to the football, then you'll get a sign or are we gonna be soliciting just for signage?
I'm sorry, say that again, Pete?
I guess my question is, do you think the solicitations will be, hey, if you give us, if you donate five hundred dollars, we'll put up a sign for you? Or, or are they gonna solicit specifically for a sign?
I think they're gonna solicit specifically for a sign. I, I think they have vendors in mind that they would like to solicit. Probably people that have participated in their advertising books and whatnot in the past.
Mr. Payne, do you have any? Would the plan then be you would go out and solicit the appropriate signs, let's just say we get five back and then it would go through the school committee, the superintendent to review and make sure that that's a sponsor that should be here? And when we were talking about the, the banner, the scoreboard a couple of years ago, the big concern was, well, what if Budweiser tries to come in? Obviously, we don't want to be, you know, showing alcohol or anything, and I'm going to an extreme there. I'm not trying to, you know, just point out that we want to make sure that any advertisements we do are in line with what we at the district are trying to show outward.
No, and Mrs. Sullivan and I had that conversation that we'd have to be very specific about the people that we solicited for this and that anybody that did want to produce a sign would obviously need to get approval from the different parties.
I'm pretty sure for the LED sign, we did update our own policy and kind of vetted through those potentials a few years back. Mike, remember, I think?
Yeah, we did.
Yep.
We need to review it again, but I don't know, I felt like we, we reviewed it.
I have that.
I know, I know we did.
Yeah, it's pretty new in terms of our policy updates, I feel like, review wise.
Yeah.
Are there other, is this a trend that you see other towns doing on their home fields? Like, are we late to this game? Or is this a novel idea?
Marshfield has a big temporary banner advertising program. I, I think with a lot of other towns, you, you've kind of seen the permanent signage now, which I've been a part of that type of campaign as well, but that takes, you know, a long time to get set up, plan, produce and whatnot. So when I was speaking with Mrs. Sullivan, I, I suggested that we don't go down that road because of the potential video scoreboard being installed. So this was kind of a, an alternative that actually she had reached out to some other booster groups and gotten this feedback.
I, I think ultimately, I mean, I think it's difficult to not support our boosters program. We want to support all of our teams and all of our students best way we can. I'm just concerned, well, I guess, I'm concerned that this is gonna be a lot of effort for potentially, I don't know how much potential reward. I just, I don't have any idea. I feel like it's a pretty short timeframe, probably what, less than a month, less than four weeks before the first game, probably, which means solicitation and printing and getting it done and approved. Again, I don't want to stifle any potential opportunity to raise funds, but that's my concern that whoever, you know, is working on this boosters does all that work and then it ultimately doesn't pan out. I also, as you said, Mr. Payne, I agree, it will set a precedent. There's a baseball field out there with a lot of fencing. There's softball field, there's a, there's a lot of fields out there and I don't think that we want to have, again, I like to raise revenue or like for, for our programs to raise revenue, but I don't think we want it to look like, you know, TD Garden out there. So those are my concerns. At the same time, I, I don't want to stifle any ability to raise funds for our programs. But as you said, I, I do think that it will set a precedent and we have to be awfully, awfully sure that any business that solicited and, and posts out there, it does fit our policy, as mentioned previously.
The, the other obstacle is here is what, while I said we could get the banners and whatnot made basically the, the first game, first football game is the tenth, and I believe we have a field hockey game on the eighth. And this still needs to get approval by several other groups, which will definitely tighten up that timeframe.
Right. So I don't, I guess also with that being said, if, if you go, if they go out to the sponsors, hey, you're gonna be there for all six home football games and then they're not printed until the third game. Sponsors may not be super happy about it, but you know, I don't really know, but that's not for us to worry about, really.
That's a potential issue, absolutely.
Yeah, I guess on top of that, my biggest concern is just the equity of it. I mean, if you have a sponsor that comes in and says, well, I'll do the football games, but not the soccer games or, you know, girls tennis or whatever the sporting event is. You know, just, just making sure that it's the funding that comes in is shared equitably. I know the, the football boosters are doing a lot of work for this and, you know, the, the boosters that do the work on this should, you know, reap the benefit of it, but at the same time, we have a lot of sports teams that I, I don't want to see just football get a lot of revenue in or we focus, serve in on the football team because that's where the signs being held up and then it could negatively impact some of other sports. And I know it's one pot, it's one sports budget, but at the same time, you know, it's an entire district that we have to care about.
No, I, I completely understand that. That, that's why I, I mentioned the fact that if, I think if this gets approved, we really need to be prepared for the same request from the other groups, which would only be fair.
And that presents an opportunity for boosters to be working together, which is a, a nice opportunity to have frankly, and something that we would welcome. I mean, I think if they're going to take responsibility and put them up and take them down and keep it clean and, you know, it's only, it seems like more positive just to, like you said, raise money for the sports and programs and kids, so. Sounds like a good idea.
Have the other boosters been consulted on this at all or not yet, just because nothing's been voted on?
I, I, I don't believe they're even aware of anything like this was coming down the pike. I personally, I, I have not met very many people that are involved with boosters. And it's because they've only been here for a month and it's the summer and whatnot. So I think, you know, as groups find, if this were to get approved, as groups find out about it, everyone's gonna want to be able to take advantage of the opportunity to raise some money, again, which is, which is only fair, and I think we would allow that if we allow one group. I just think, you know, this is taking place during the summer, it's something new. You know, there's just not a lot of people that know about it.
Especially more of the fall sports, we'd probably have to be more proactive because, you know, the basketball boosters have a little bit more time. And my kids are in the younger, the lower schools, so I don't know how many boosters are out there or if there's a booster for every sport, but you know, at the same time, I'm making this up, if there's no booster for boy soccer, you know, how do they join in on this? You know what I mean? So again, just with the equity and I'm, I'm sure you've already thought about this, but just making sure that, you know, that, that continues to happen and it's not, oh, I heard about this because I watched the school committee meeting or I saw it on Facebook or wherever. It's, you know, it, it's well known that it's out there and that every, every team can, can benefit. Or this isn't just a football thing, it's just an athletics thing that we, we do across the board. I'm, I'm not trying to take this away from the football team when I say that, but just again, using this potential across all sports.
Well, I think ultimately this could lead to a much better discussion and certainly not for tonight.
Right.
That doesn't make sense down the road to look at the possibility of creating one boosters group, which I believe would be extremely beneficial, but that, that's a very involved emotional conversation. So obviously that could be a topic for a different time.
Yeah, I do want to expect you to boil the ocean tonight.
Yeah, I mean, ultimately, I think, I mean, again, I think it's difficult to to minimize or reduce the ability of our groups to, to raise funds. I think that potentially this is a one-year kind of, you know, kind of not post pandemic, but end of pandemic, hopefully, effort to raise funds where last year really was a difficult year to do so. I'm, I'm probably in support of just this being a one-time approval with the ability to, you know, have this end at the end of this year. Mike, Mike, I agree with you, it's an equity issue potentially, but this is really just the football team trying to raise money and it's only gonna be hung during football games. I think we do need clarity, clarification if, if, as you said, I'm, if, if this is approved, I think that it would be appropriate for a freshman JV and varsity, but I know that there's different people involved at each level. So I don't know if someone will be responsible for hanging and taking down after each event and not just the varsity.
And Mr. Payne, how, let, let's just say we get five sponsors, how would the funds actually be handled? Would that all go through the school, back to the boosters? Would that go directly to the boosters? How would that process work?
So I believe, and Dr. McGuire, please correct me if I'm wrong, that the money does go directly to the football and cheerleading boosters.
That is correct. So they run their own budgets, they develop as five oh three C B? Is it? Nonprofit organizations have treasurers. All of their fundraising and purchasing does have to get approved by us, though.
So just make sure I have it right. They would reach out to you, they would say, we have three advertisers, here's the signs, we would approve it. So technically, we wouldn't see the, the amount that they receive, we wouldn't see any of the funding come in, it would go directly to them.
That's correct.
Correct.
So really, it would be up to each booster then to do their own thing, work with, you know, if, if boy soccer, I'll use them as a big example. Here's that the football team has a sponsor, they could reach out to them and say, hey, do you want to do funds for us too? Yes or no? Obviously, there's a lot more games, a lot more potential there, but a lot of crowds, so it's up to them to work out their own price bracket and then how the signs are displayed.
Correct. And, and the other reason this again would just be for the one year is because if we move, if we have the ability to move forward, if we can get enough sponsors for the video scoreboard, that money comes to the school, that money doesn't go to the booster groups. So that will be a significant change.
I agree with Peter. I think, I think it's great that we can raise money and help our sports teams. I I'm a little concerned with the overall process, but I mean, something we definitely have to keep a close eye on.
Yeah, and, and I think, I know, Mr. Payne, I know you're new to Citro, but similar, I mean, most other, or I'll say football and hockey and soccer, I'm, I'm not, some other sports, they, they're raising money through different channels. I know some have programs, I'm sure the football team has a program that they run ads through. This is just another way to supplement the fund. This isn't gonna be their sole way to, to raise funds. So I applaud them for looking for different ways of sources of revenue, but as mentioned previously, you know, there are concerns about, obviously, it's coming to us kind of last minute. I have concerns of whether or not they'll be able to get it done in time, but that's not really for me to worry about. You know, if the boosters wants to put in the effort, try to get this done in time, that's something that they're gonna have to deal with. As long as their sponsors are aware that, you know, if there's a delay in printing and, you know, we start, still are in a pandemic, I'm sure that there's a shortage of supplies and so on, that, you know, there's a potential that they're, again, they're promised six games, may not be six games, and then they don't want to come back to the school committee asking for a refund. Which I don't think they will.
We're completely out of it.
Yeah. I don't think that will happen. I think if someone that supports Citro High School Football is gonna support them whether or not there's a sign up there, but I just want to make sure that those that are in charge are aware that, that, you know, there could be some potential ramifications.
All very good points.
Mr. Payne, is there a timeframe of when the scoreboard sponsorship will be up and running?
So is a timeframe regarding when I'll actually start to see people and solicit people, if that's something they'd be interested in? I would say probably after the first week of the season and everything's up and running, I'll have a much better hold on how everything's working and going and whatnot, and that will, should allow me time to go out and actually start meeting with people.
Okay, right.
Okay, as, as I said, Mr. Luette gave me the list of vendors that he was going to stop meeting with, and we'll go through that list again and providing that everybody is still in business and still there, we'll, we'll call on them and hopefully add some new potential sponsors as well.
I just would hate to, like, we, we would be approving this in lieu of the electronic, electronic sponsorship. So I just want, you know, the equity thing, I would just want everybody to have, all those other sports that are using that field have an equal opportunity this year to, well, it's actually not because the money goes right to the football boosters.
Correct.
Yeah.
What other sports could do it if they want, their boosters wanted to, for their own?
I'm thinking of like the spring sports.
Yeah.
You know?
If, if this is approved, the, the winter and spring sports are, would actually, you know, if those boosters clubs want to follow through with this, they're in pretty good shape because they've got a lot of time to get organized and reach out to people and whatnot. You know, it'll be, if, if there are other fall programs that want to hop on board, it's gonna be difficult.
Right.
Especially because there still needs to be other groups that approve this.
Yep. Yeah, I think, I just think it's gonna be tough to, I mean, you're looking at about four weeks to get this approved, solicited and made. I just don't, I just, I just don't think it's reasonable, but if those folks responsible think they can, that's great.
So can, can I ask?
And I would just ask, sorry, I, I would just ask if this does get approved that in lieu of, you know, the other boosters finding out that any fall sport booster we reach out to directly and let know, you know, this is going on so that, you know, they're not in the dark and they have two weeks to figure this out instead of four, whatever the case may be.
Just a quick question, if it's approved at the school committee, I'm, I'm not positive of the exact process. It needs to be approved by the selectmen? And does it need to be approved by the recreation department?
I believe just the board of selectmen.
Okay.
But they have, they, they only meet every other week too, so they, I'm not sure if you're on their next agenda.
The earliest you'd get on there is the twenty-fourth.
That makes it really tight.
Yeah.
But if they did, if they did some behind the scenes work and not had any, not have anything finalized and it did get approved, then they would have a couple of weeks to, to get the banners produced, which I believe they could do. Mrs. Sullivan reached out to Webster Printing, I think on a Tuesday, and they had the banners, the, the mockups on Thursday.
And you'll have to check to make sure that rec doesn't need to approve. I, I don't know either way. I, I think it's something that we always struggle with as a school committee. When the rec, when rec and when town needs to opine on it, but I would check with the recreation commission as well. Just note that all of these departments have, you know, public meeting law and they have to post an agenda forty-eight hours, so the selectmen's probably gonna be the most difficult one to get on, I would think. I mean, you can get on it, but just in terms of when their next meeting is.
Okay.
And, and Mr. Payne, when Superintendent Burke had brought this to my attention, I think a couple of weeks ago, I did note, I let their chair know that this could be coming down just so that they were aware.
Okay.
We didn't get into, into any specifics at all, but just, you know, if you reach out to Karen Connolly, she'll at least have an understanding that, you know, she knew you were coming down as far as.
Okay, great.
All right, are there any other questions from the committee?
No, I just want, I just want to make sure again, I know, Mr. Rain, you know, it's still in, in process, but I think we just need a little bit of clarification. I think I cut out before is that clarification of if this is just for varsity games or for JV and freshman and make sure that if they are for the other levels, that there are people there to put up and take down the signs, that's all. I don't necessarily care either way. I would assume that the sponsors would rather have it up more than, than, than not. So if there's more opportunities, just make sure that, again, there's a team of people from freshman and soft JV to, to put up and take these down.
I, I mean, honestly, if, if we had sponsors that were going to commit with this, I would, I'd commit to make sure, making sure that the, the signs are for all levels.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, and from a procedural point of view, I know in our backup, it, it said a recommendation for the football booster athletic banner fundraising request. If we're considering this, we're doing it for all sports, I would strike the words football booster so that we don't hamstring any other sports. I don't, I don't know whether committee is landing on this, but. I don't know whether committee is landing on this, but I I would make sure that any motion that is made is more vague than just the football team.
Yeah, I agree. I think it makes sense, Mike.
And just for the 2021 fall season right now or?
The school year.
2021. Okay.
Yeah, I agree. Again, if 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 another fall team comes up and hears about this tonight, that they they can get on it and they don't have to come back to us and ask for the approval.
Yeah.
Because if not, it's August 30th and it's, they're really tight. I don't want to hurt any of those things.
Yeah. Right. And I would make a motion to, I would make a motion to accept the all school booster athletic banner fundraising request for the school year 2021, 2022.
A second?
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, second by Miss Limbong. Roll call vote. Gates?
Yes.
Limbong?
Yes.
Brandalini?
Yes.
And Long? Yeah. Mr. Payne, I just ask, can we just get regular updates from you, maybe every other week or something along those lines as to where this can?
Absolutely. And and thank you very much. That's very much appreciated.
Good luck.
Oh, Dr. McGuire, I can talk to you about this tomorrow.
Yes, good luck to everyone.
All right. So next on the agenda is the high school segment athletics, the Situate High School Varsity Girls Golf proposal from Dr. McGuire and Mr. Payne.
Thank you again for having us this evening to talk about some athletics matters before you. We've had a girls' golf club participating at the school. It's been very popular thus far. We have a number of active young ladies who are committed to to moving to the next step. So we wanted to bring our proposal to you to recognize golf as a varsity sport. I'll let A.D. Payne go over some of the particulars.
So as you can see in this slide, if we want to recognize the the program as a varsity sport, we would need to be registered with the MIA. We have already submitted our institutional registration form for 2122, but that can be updated at any time because there are many times during the school year that schools actually add varsity sports. So that would not be an issue at all. The team would compete in the Patriot League during the regular season. The team would be held to all rules and expectations of the MIA Patriot League at Situate High School. The hiring process of the coach would be no different than any other team. We would put together an interview team and we would accept applications from potential candidates. We'd vet those applications and then bring forward the individuals to be interviewed by the interview committee. Ultimately, you know, if we had multiple candidates, get that down to two or three candidates that would be brought forward to meet with the high school administration and then ultimately with the superintendent for the final approval. I, as the athletic director, would manage the program as with any other sport under the direction of the high school. And here is a, here is the process of the funding. I developed this. We don't have anything in our handbook right now. So I felt like this would be a a proper procedure to move forward with and it could be the base of how we would fund any new team in the future. So in year one, which would be 2022, the program would be unfunded and all expenses paid by the boosters. So there would have to be fundraising that needed to be done there with the boosters organization and the team is a small group. So that requires more work by fewer people. And as the athletic director, I told Mrs. Spires, who spearheaded this is the head of the boosters, that I would work diligently with that group to help them raise the funds needed to make sure that the program has all the money in year one. And then in year two, the district would pay the coaches stipend and half of the transportation costs. And we'll have a slide further down that actually lays out the budget and it's much easier to understand how the funding works. And the boosters would in year two would be responsible for about $1,700 of that budget. And then in year three, which would be 2024, the district would cover all the expenses that would be created by girls' golf. And I did get the approval that in year 2022 and 2023, the athletic fees paid by the girls participating in the golf program would go to directly to offset expenses versus going into just the general pool.
So historically, when teams have moved from clubs to sports, there are expenses that are covered by the boosters who come together to get the team off the ground. This is just in line with some of our other sports, volleyball, field hockey, for example. And we would need to, in this time from when, if the team is approved to moving forward, you know, account for this in the, in the contract so that there is a position, there is no coach position. That's why, you know, we haven't budgeted for transportation costs or or costs for the team, but we would do that moving forward to bring the team fully under the high school.
So this slide just, this is the, these are the members of the Patriot League, Coacit, Duxbury, Hingham, Quincy and North Quincy compete as a cooperative program. And then Situate, Marshfield is in the process of potentially starting a club team for this fall, which may or may not move to a varsity team in a year or two. I did reach out to Widow's Walk to make sure that the facility would be available for the girls to use in the spring for practice and home matches. And Ian assures me, Ian Kelly assures me that there, of course, would be available for the girls.
So then the breakdown is of expenses really comes from what we have budgeted for our boys varsity golf team right now. For Title IX and for equity purposes, the the numbers are the same. The only difference is where the where the funding would come from across the first three years.
So on this slide, you can see transportation, $2,000. We do have the school van and the more we use the school van, the the smaller that number becomes. And with boys and girls not playing home on, excuse me, in different seasons, you know, they may be able to use that van for all of their transportation. And so we may not have any transportation expenses, which would greatly help. And then the fees, you know, I use the number of $2,000. It's a spring sport, so you do have situations where families have reached the cap so they don't pay for their kids to play spring sports. And you don't know how many kids potentially could be receiving a waiver. So by decreasing transportation and increasing fees, that number of 5983 could be reduced pretty significantly, depending upon how it all played out. So that would be your year one. So then you can see here in year two, 2023, where the district would pick up the coaches stipend, half of the transportation. The contribution from boosters is $1,075. Again, that could greatly fluctuate depending upon transportation costs and fees collected again. And then in year three, there is no expense to the boosters, the district will cover all expenses and the athletic fees collected would be deposited in the general school. So it's, you know, it's a small program. It's, it's not a, I'm not saying $8,000 isn't a significant number, but it's, it's a program that I think we can absolutely raise the money for to cover the expenses for this year. There is a lot of interest in in the girls in the district in golf, and I think it's a sport that would grow pretty quickly. I can actually see the potential of a JV team a couple of years out, which I think will be great. And I just think it's an opportunity to provide another sport for the girls to play in which, you know, Situate has a rich golf heritage with some beautiful courses in the town. And I feel that it would be a, just a great opportunity for them. And I'm fully in support of of adding this program.
Great, thank you. I'll open up to the committee if they have any questions.
I still have a couple of questions, I guess. Mr. Payne, and it's, I think our, you know, coming in, you're coming as a new athletic director and already having some issues to work on, so appreciate it. Is there, is there any Title IX issues with approving or not approving this girls' golf team?
No, we're not in any, I I read the Title IX report that Mr. Lueck gave to me and we, we do not have any Title IX violations.
Okay. And secondly, a kind of a, I guess, a little bit abstract question, but is there a reason why we're just seeing this? And this isn't really for you because you just started. Is there a reason why we're just seeing?
I can't hear.
I think he's frozen.
Either you cut out halfway.
I had the same question. I'm assuming his question is, is there a reason why we're seeing this now as opposed to previous to the budget approval for 2122? That what you were going to ask, Peter?
Yeah, so I am, yeah. But but I did want to comment and say, I do recognize that the current proposal is, doesn't impact our current budget.
Yes.
Before this meeting, before I looked at the backup, I thought that it was going to ask for money this year. So obviously, there were some things that happened, which from a budget perspective, look positive, but I just, I was just curious, I guess. Because we want to make sure we set a precedent going forward. So when teams want to become varsity, we know what the process is.
I know for sure that Mrs. Spires, who is heading up the boosters, her daughter is playing on the club team right now. And some of the other parents and students approached the former athletic director. We, they, they had conversations about the timeline. We were unsure if we had a policy for moving clubs to sport, to varsity sports. So that was one of the things we had to look into. I did in the spring meet with Mrs. Spires when I realized that this was something that they were looking to move on. But we did wait for Athletic Director Payne to start working. So when we learned that this wasn't brought forward through the school year and it was the booster intent to 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 move this team this year, I got involved, Scott got involved. Superintendent Burkhead met with us and then we wanted to bring it to you.
Okay, and again, I've only heard about this. I heard it through, I had a couple of emails maybe a month or two ago. Are those folks that are involved, are they happy with this potential outcome? Would they be happy with this potential outcome?
So you can answer that question a couple of ways. Honestly, Mr. Gates, would, you know, with the pandemic being a part of this and I think some communication lapses along the way, I think the group that supports girls' golf feels like they're at a point where they probably should be funded at this point. And honestly, you know, I don't know what had transpired prior to me starting, but my focus has been on to to make this a girls' varsity sport for the spring, which I feel is, is, that's the most important aspect here. I I feel like we, you know, we have to do some work to fundraise. As I said, I did commit to Mrs. Spires to help them do that, which I would with any new program. I just feel it's part of the athletic director's job. I do understand the group's frustration that, that, you know, there, there is no funding in year one. But I think, and I don't want to speak for them by any means, but just in conversations with Mrs. Spires, that they'd be very excited if this was a varsity sport moving forward and ultimately is a funded sport in a couple of years.
One of the things we wanted to be respectful for to was that desire to move and when to move. Typically, a club would be a club sport for about three years because that's the time it takes to get a coach in, get it into your contract, put it into your budget, move forward. This is a program that's been in 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 action for two years where they're willing to meet us with the budget and that's one of the reasons why we're able to bring this to you. And and we felt from an athletic standpoint, from an administrative standpoint, that we would be able to move this forward and in good conscience, bring you a proposal. We probably would not have approved it to get to this point if we were on the, you know, on for the budget because it's just not fiscally responsible for us to not go through the budget process with the sport. So we're trying to meet them in their desire to to be varsity this year. They certainly could have, could be a club for another year and we could go through the budget process because they said they're willing to do the fundraising to, and really that is the the distinction between whether we can move forward. We all felt comfortable that we could bring this to you tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Did you say that there was no previous protocols to start a team in the past, Mr. Payne? I thought in your original, is there nothing, is this what was done with volleyball and this is the protocol? Or or is this bringing to light a problem with the past way clubs came to be or this is the typical trajectory?
So I I hope I'm not misspeaking, but I think what it's bringing to light is there's been some inconsistency.
Okay.
Because there is no actual process in the handbook.
Got it.
The funding process has been similar for other sports, though.
And I agree with you, Dr. McGuire. I think anytime we can, if we have students that want to kick part in some kind of activity or bring something into the school and just expand on what the school offers, I think it's a great opportunity that we can do. And allowing this year's upcoming seniors to play varsity sport, if there are any seniors on the girls' golf team, I think is a much better message to send than, you know, it's going to be a club next year. Sorry, you just missed out. And and I'm glad, Mr. Payne, that you're going to be doing a lot of work regarding the the boosting. And, you know, I think that'll be good for us to hear as as time goes on, just how much we're able to fund or help fund through the fundraising. Because obviously, we're a public school. We don't want to have fees at all if we can avoid it. But at the same time, we don't want to put this on the backs of this year's parents in this specific booster club who who's moving forward.
We could sell, we could have Widow's Walk sells T-Box sponsors.
Well, that was actually my question. I mean, if we, we just allowed signage at sporting events. And I thought of this after our votes. I apologize for bringing it up now, but if there, if there's space for signs at a football game and the girls' golf team got a sign that they could put up, would we consider putting signs up for other sports during the the football game so that that booster can can gain the benefit? I think preference has to go to the sport that, you know, that's whose game it is, but, you know, there's space. I don't see why we can't get all of our boosters, you know, if we're going to allow this, allow all of our boosters to benefit across any of the games that we provide, especially where I don't think there's much golf going on in the next couple of months. So, you know, they kind of lose out on the whole signage approach.
I I think that ultimately, though, may be a decision that Widow's Walk would would finally make. They might have the final call on that words there.
Well, no, I mean, I mean, if Mrs. Spires gets a, if we have space and Mrs. Spires gets a sponsor, they put up the sign during the football game because we have.
Oh, okay, yes. Yeah, absolutely.
I mean, any way we can help that, I think, is is important from a public school perspective, but I think this is a great opportunity.
Yeah, and I think the dollars are, again, the dollars are important, but they are minimal relative to our entire budget. So I think that, you know, reasonably speaking, I think that that we that we should make this happen as a district.
And that's why we wanted to earmark the athletic fees that are coming in to help the team out. So I have a question about the Patriot League. So are all the other teams in the the school districts in the Patriot League, they all have a girls' golf team?
The ones that were listed in that slide. Yes. So not, no, there's 12 schools in the Patriot League, I think, only four or five.
Oh.
Because Cosco Hasit's actually a member of the social league. They're an associate member of the Patriot League in girls' golf.
Okay. And do you mention Marshfield? Is Marshfield is in the Patriot League now or is that still?
No, they are, they are. No, they are, they are an official member of the Patriot League.
Okay, and they do have a golf team or they they were gonna join us?
When I reached out to the athletic directors of the Patriot League to find out who had a team. Their athletic athletic director told me they did not, but there's a proposal for them to potentially have a club team. This year and ultimately, you know, having that become a varsity team down the road.
Okay, so it wouldn't be like, I'm just trying to, I think. If Marshfield were to have a team, would they be able to skip? That process and? Have a, actually, never mind, I'm thinking like, because we used to have like Citrogo has its win and. Would it help them build up their team if we, you know, did a dual? School team, you know what I'm saying, like?
So, yes, I I do know what you're saying, but that's totally numbers based.
Yeah.
You know, it couldn't, that wouldn't work, Marshfield and Citro wouldn't work because Citro has too many participants. If you had two golfers and they had four. Then you could talk about having a co-op program.
Okay.
It's it's all. Numbers driven.
Okay, thank you.
I guess my last question is. Currently, do you know what the roster would look like, you know, what? Grade levels that participants are in, are they mostly seniors, mostly sophomores, mostly juniors, or is it spread out?
So I I've spoken to Mrs. Spires several times about that. She has a list when they did a potential signup that has, I believe, just under thirty girls' names. On that list in. You know, because it wasn't actually considered a high school sport, some of those girls, I think, backed away and went to lacrosse or whatnot. I think if, you know, word spreads that we now have a girls' varsity golf team. I think we'll see number, good numbers across all grades. Right now. There's there's more juniors and seniors and there are sophomores and freshmen, but there are enough sophomores and freshmen for the program to be sustainable.
Okay. Okay.
I mean, I honestly, I believe we could have a situation in the spring. Where. We have enough girls playing that we may have to cut girls.
Wow.
Wow.
No, that's, and it's great, I I was thinking there was going to be maybe ten. Ten girls with interest in this, so I was a little bit hesitant. But there, you really think if there's thirty interests, that's amazing.
If you got half of that, you're at fifteen and then.
Yeah, what's a golf team, five, is it five anyways?
Six.
Yeah. So that's, that's great.
You know, the other thing. By adding a girls' golf program, I know this is reaching a little bit, but. Maybe we keep one or two girls from from going to a private school because we don't offer girls' golf. You know, I know we're only talking maybe a couple, but. Could be a couple more that we keep.
Yeah.
Mr. Payne, do we, is it only varsity golf in the Patriot League or do they actually have a JV?
Ducks, Marion, Hingham have JV teams.
Yeah, we say cutting girls, if, you know, we can keep as many interested in the sport as we can and do a JV team. I don't know if that would have to be part of this vote. But, you know, I'd rather let as many girls play as possible than having to continually or having to have cuts or. And that would be across any sport, but making sure we. Let as many kids play as they can.
I mean, that would just, if we did have. If we were fortunate enough to have that many girls and we could schedule. Some JV matches with so few schools having JV teams. The expense would be extremely limited.
Yeah.
I can't see that if we had four to six matches, I can't see it. Adding more than a thousand dollars to the overall budget.
Yeah.
Right, it it would be, it would have to be sustainable.
Certainly would be doable, yeah, that would be a nice problem to have.
Yeah.
I agree.
At the end of March.
Excellent.
Are there any other questions from the committee? If not, we'll entertain a motion on the proposal.
Sorry, Mike, one more question. In terms of the coaches stipend, is that? It seems weird to me that boosters would fund a coach's salary, is that? Also unique to the situation or is that typical?
That's something that we'll request as the next contract cycle. Unfolds during the school year, we'll request to add to the contract. So that moving forward, we'll have that coach. And that's that's typical as well.
It's it is not unusual for a booster's organization to pay the coach's stipend in the first year or two.
Do you know the questions? I will.
I have a quick comment. I I think that what has really been impactful is the number of students who I I know that it's just a. Are you interested in golf, thirty is just, you know, three times what I thought it was. Which just. You know, I guess allows me to really want to expedite the funding of this program. I know, obviously, there were some, you know, hiccups that happened over the last six months or whatever, I'm not going to, you know, that happens, I I recognize it. But would the committee be interested in looking at? Slightly fast-tracking the funding of this and maybe funding it fully in twenty twenty-three?
Yes.
You know, it's only, it's only a difference of a thousand dollars, but I mean, I feel like. Maybe this year they're being asked too much, but maybe we can offset that a little bit by next year by by fully funding it in twenty twenty-three and beyond.
Yeah, I I don't think that's an answer. You can put tonight, Peter, but I think it's a great problem to put in front of Superintendent Burkhead and Dr. Dutch and have that as part of our conversation in February.
They can start looking.
That's a good, that's a good point.
So tonight, are we just gonna, are we approving varsity? Sorry, varsity status?
That's what it looks like, just.
Discussions about funding?
So tonight, it would just be to recognize girls' golf because of varsity sport.
And vote.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, I'll make a motion to recognize girls' golf as a varsity sport at Citro High School for. School year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Roll call vote, long yes, Brindalini?
Yes.
Blimblum?
Yes.
And get.
Um, yes, but I should amend that motion, it should be girl girls' golf as a varsity sport with no, you know, beginning in twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. Correct, not just for next year, but for the future. Yeah.
Do you want to make the motion again, Peter, so it's clear?
Yeah, sorry. I'd like to make a motion to recognize girls' golf as a varsity sport beginning in year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. At Citro High School.
Second.
Do the roll call vote again, long yes, Brindalini?
Yes.
Blimblum?
Yes.
And get.
Yes.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Payne, I know that there's been a lot of communication on this, so. You know, thank you for bringing you and Dr. McGuire and Mrs. Spires to bring this together tonight and, you know, moving this forward.
That, again, thank you all very much and anytime we have an opportunity. To create the ability for someone to participate in an activity, I think it's great and it's very, again, very much appreciated.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Chairman Long, also just to reiterate what Mr. Gates said, just if, could we revisit this on? At some point, like you said, February or something, just to talk a little bit more about potential funding if the district's able to. To make that happen in any way. Just because obviously, you know, we should do that.
Yeah, if we're looking at it, I think Peter said for the twenty twenty-three. Season, so if that's the case, we'd definitely be part of our budget discussion for fiscal year twenty twenty-three.
Sounds good.
So moving on in the agenda, the next item is the school committee vacancy appointment. So as many people know, Michael Hayes resigned from the school committee about ten days ago now. Which is an opening that we need to fill. So pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter forty-one, Section eleven. We would work with the Board of Selectmen to appoint a new. Member to the school committee. This person would fill out the remainder of Mr. Hayes's term. So this person would start when a vote occurs between both committees and would. Would have to rerun if they chose to for next spring's annual town election. The only timeline that we had to follow as part of that process was the school committee had to notify the Board of Selectmen within. Thirty calendar days notifying them that we wanted to be part of the. Non-approval pointy process. That occurred today, so that was completed. But if not, the entire process would have been owned and run by the Board of Selectmen and the school committee would not have had any say. So like I said, that was completed, so we'll be part of that process. An email went out through the town last week, it was also re-published through the school today. But the current timeline is. Out. Anyone who's interested in joining the school committee to. Fill Mike, Mr. Hayes's term would apply through the Board of Selectmen office and to Lorraine Devon. By August twentieth. We would hold public meetings in person on September eighth and potentially September ninth, depending on. You know, the number of applicants that we receive. And then another public meeting would be held in September fifteenth, where both boards would come back together. And nominate and appoint a new person to the school committee. That person would only require a majority vote, so it would just take five people to vote to approve that person to the school committee. I do know September eighth is the first day of school. When we looked at timelines and calendars and everything, and in order to get this person in in a timely manner. A lot of things that discuss as a school committee. That was the earliest that we could bring both boards together and vote and that would get them in in time for the only meeting that we have in September. On September twentieth. The only role that the Tom Clark would have in this is just swearing in that person once they're appointed. And then once that person is sworn in, they would be able to attend any of our meetings as an official school committee member. I think that covers the entire process, I wanted to make sure that that got out through our meeting. I know there's been a couple of requests already coming in for people that want to apply. The school committee will get a list probably around August twentieth with a list of former people that have applied for the position. And then we'd be able to reach out individually to those people if we chose to and then ask questions at the meeting on September eighth. I think that's everything that I had to cover as part of that agenda item, like I said, I was trying to make sure that it was clear between the school committee members with the the community. The one other thing that I would just say is this is a town process and doesn't have anything to do with the school administration, because ultimately we are hiring. Someone to oversee the school district. So if there are any questions. And Superintendent Burkhead has been either telling the person to reach out to me directly or. Forwarding me the email with the person saying, hey, this should go through the the school committee. So if people do have any questions, they're recommend going up through the Board of Selectmen's office, or if they want to reach out to me directly, they can, but not through Superintendent Burkhead. And then, is there any questions from the committee on that process and that timeline?
No, Mike, can you just go over that September eighth or ninth meeting is, we're going to be interviewing those candidates who have applied, correct?
Correct, so we'll we'll meet on September eighth. And then depending on the number of people that apply, if we need to, we'll have additional interviews on September ninth.
Okay.
All of those meetings will be in person, it's a public meeting, so people can attend and then it will also be recorded.
Okay, do you know, and we can take this off line, but do you know the the questions that we'll be asking, is it somewhat to a regular? Do you anticipate, you know, regular search committee where we'll come up with a group, a list of questions, ask the same questions to every candidate or is it kind of more of? Based upon their letter of letter of application and where we want to go with that? And you may not know the answer, but I just, I just was curious.
Yeah, Karen Connolly, the Chair of the Board of Selectmen, said she was going to send me a list of potential proposed questions. I think, you know, when I get a list, I can definitely share it with the rest of the school committee. We might want to, so we don't want to share the questions ahead of time and give someone a head start, but. You know, make sure that we all agree what the questions are, I think it'll work very similar to when we interviewed for the superintendent position. Where a list of questions will be compiled and then, you know, each person would ask either one question or a set of questions. So that anyone who wants to ask a question during the process can, but it's fair and consistent with. Across all of the people that apply.
Okay, great.
And and this is an interview process with the select board, correct, so they will ask questions?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, so this will be a joint meeting. Like I said, it just requires a majority vote, so the Board of Selectmen will have a chance to weigh in on the next school committee member. But it'll be a joint meeting anytime that we get together to either interview the candidates or discuss and ultimately vote on a new appointee. And if people do have questions either on the meeting tonight or in the future, feel free to email me at mlong@citro.org. All applicants will go through the Board of Selectmen office, we don't necessarily say over that. And that was in the letter that went out through the the town and the school, but I'll be more than happy to answer any questions that people have. After tonight, Peter.
And Mike, we have the two nights scheduled so far for interviews and then if we anticipate needing to add a third or something, we'll just.
I think I think if we need to, we'll have to look at a third date. I think the Board of Selectmen meet that. That week, but I'm, I forget their exact schedule, but we'll have to just coordinate that with everybody's calendars.
Yeah. Okay.
So if there are no other questions, then I'll move forward in the agenda to the leadership reports. The first is from Superintendent Burkhead.
Thank you, Chairman Long, and good evening, everyone. It's, first of all, I'd say it's great to hear all the talk about sports and, you know. Hearing the kids out on the field every night and they're in the the weight room working out and training and, you know, getting excited to participate, so to me, that's really exciting. Shows me that school's right around the corner and that kids are competing again, so it's really nice to see, I also want to, you know, congratulate the football and cheer booster club for, you know. Thinking outside the box to, you know, I know fundraising has been challenging during the pandemics for sure. So to think outside the box and come up with a good idea to raise funds and I appreciate the school committee voting in favor of that and. Also want to congratulate our and welcome on our our girls' golf team to the. The athletic family and thank Miss Spires and all the wonderful parents and student athletes that have. Really put a lot of work and effort into making it happen and just looking forward to seeing them play on there in the links of spring. And certainly thank you to Dr. McGuire for all her work. I know Mr. Lewett has put a lot of work into this and finally to Mr. Payne. Who, if I must use a pun here, has taken the pain to get this thing here and that's my cheesy dad joke for tonight, but all good, so thank you for that. First part of the meeting was very promising and uplifting. And as far as the funding for the girls' golf, I'll be happy to speak with. Dr. Dutch and Mr. Payne and Dr. McGuire about. Making that a possibility for incorporating the girls' golf into the twenty-three budget. Because of the time they've spent in the pipeline. So I will take care of that and looking into it. Just an update, it's been a busy summer, having a lot of fun getting ready for the new school year. Spent some time up in Boston on July twenty-seventh, meeting in person for the first time. With the CEO of our Met Pro Program, the state's Metco program, Millie Arbajé Thomas. Got to see the new Boston headquarters for the Metco program, it was extremely impressive, her and her team were impressive. Loved her vision, she, you know, was working closely with our own Michelle Crawford to make. Our our Metco program stronger and more viable, so it was a really good visit up there and and got me inspired to. You know, see our kids again and make our Metco program even stronger here. Also in updated news tomorrow. For the next three days, our our leadership team will be meeting for our summer retreat. Consisting consisting of central office staff, building level administrators and department chairs and coordinators. And we'll be focusing on the work for this year. You know, discussing our vision and goals, putting things down, action plans and. What the upcoming school year is going to look like and just grow professionally. And together as a team, so that's an exciting week, so I'll be looking forward to sharing with the community what. We accomplished this week with those. With that weekend with those leadership people and also to report out on. Our goals eventually for the upcoming school year. Lastly, I have. Fall guidance update. You know, pretty important stuff on the on how our start to school is going to be this fall. On July thirtieth, the Commissioner. Of Education came out with fall guidance for school districts. In the guidance, it was clearly articulated and I'll quote here. All districts and schools will be required to be in person, full-time, five days a week this fall. And unquote. The guidance document was developed jointly by DESI and the Department of Public Health. And outlined recommendations on masking COVID testing and quarantine protocols. In the document, it encouraged districts to establish testing plan, which we had a strong one last year and they'll be releasing a new version of their. What they're calling the protocols for responding to COVID nineteen scenario. and they'll be releasing um a new version of their, what they're calling the protocols for responding to COVID-nineteen scenarios, which I'm um likening to uh what the quarantine protocol will be. So that's yet to be determined uh as things evolve. So we're, as soon as we hear from the primary education, we'll be reporting that out. And I guess the most controversial and and vague piece to me and other administrators is the guidance on uh masking. And I know it's a hot topic. Um, similar to last year, the decision will fall under local control. Ultimately, the school committee will decide. Um, inconsistent with last year, uh with the hundreds of decisions we had to make, this won't be unique. We've had to make these tough, difficult decisions before, and um I think it's important for us to follow the same best practice and protocols that we uh used last year to serve us well. Um, in keeping our students and staff safe, and and what those best practices included was strong communication, transparency, uh voice, and our ability to follow the current science data to make decisions that will uh protect approximately four thousand people that are soon to enter our schools. So a little update on what's been happening since the uh July thirtieth update. Um, our medical advisory committee has been meeting on multiple occasions to assess the DESI guidance and monitor current state national uh guidance. We've also uh been in communication with surrounding towns and leaderships to discuss the topic, including other superintendents and school committee members. Uh, and just so people know that may be new to the to the district or for first time joining, our medical advisory committee is our local uh committee, which involves um two two uh situat physicians, uh pediatrician and our school doctor, Dr. Lane, pediatrician McBride, and our school nurse leader Kelly Roach, myself, um, Kim Peters, my assistant, and Dr. Dutch. Um, so we've got a, and I think we're adding Heidi um Driscoll into that mix as well. So that group has been meeting regularly, um, and is one piece of the puzzle. Um, I speaking in with Chairman uh Long this week, uh my recommendation to the school committee would be as follows, to hold a special school committee meeting next Monday, August sixteenth, to allow the medical advisory committee uh and team to present proposals for consideration. And I use the word plural because I think there should be options for your considerations. Um, this meeting would be public, obviously, and uh public comment could act as a forum for people to um share their opinion on um the masking uh guidance, if you will. Uh, and it and it's been part and parcel to our uh input that we allowed for last year, and that help is helpful hearing. I know some parents have reached out, you know, what's the best way to communicate our our feelings? And we've gotten a lot of emails, so we're trying to uh give multiple opportunities and venues that everyone feels that they have a voice. So that's one opportunity um that I recommend. And the second one will be, um, we've uh had great uh success last year with setting up a safe and strong um email uh address in which those that are not able to or uncomfortable with speaking at public uh comment or school committee meetings uh or prefer just to to put things in writing, will have an opportunity to send an email. Um, and I'll give the email address now, and we'll share it out again, but for those that are interested, it's uh safe and strong, spelling the whole word out, S-A-F-E-A-N-D-S-T-R-O-N-G@sit, S-C-I-T dot org. So safeandstrong@sit.org. Um, and what happens there is we collect all those. Uh, my sister and I, we review review them, we share them with our MAC. Uh, we summarize them, obviously, if there's a lot, and we also share those summaries with the school committee. You can offer us a summary of those in public as well. So those are are being read. They were read last year, and they were shared with those groups. Uh, and your opinions matter, so we'll we'll take them into consideration. There's a couple of ways of getting your voice and and getting involved in the conversation. Um, and then after that happens, the school committee next meeting will be on August thirtieth, which um would be the vote vote on the um the policy. And then um I would follow up with obviously the detailed correspondence to our community with any more details that came from that vote or those meetings. So I, in summary, I think this process is transparent, it's consistent to what we've done successfully, it provides community input, it allows options, and it gives the school committee time to make well-informed decisions. Um, so that's all I have for this evening.
Great. Thank you, Superintendent Burkhead. Are there any questions from the rest of the committee?
Sorry, I would just comment um to echo what Superintendent Burkhead said. We received lots of emails, uh mostly regarding the masking um policy that will be voted.
Peter, you cut out again.
Sorry, I froze again. Am I back, Mike?
Yep, you're back.
Sorry, I swill I I received a lot of emails about the uh masking policy that we're to vote on. I'm reading all of those. It's not going to be easy decision. Um, as of this point, you know, there's no real consensus, uh getting equal equal support for for both sides of the argument, and you know, um waiting to get some more information from our medical advisory team. Um, but we are reading them and and appreciate and appreciate the comments. Um, Superintendent Burkhead, only question I had relative, I know you said there's going to be options for us to vote on. Um, do you anticipate it's going to be, not to get too detailed, but it will be, will there be two options or three options? And I'm thinking something along the lines of, you know, parent choice, K through six masking versus all-school masking, something like that. Do you anticipate there'll be multiple options, or will it depend upon what the medical advisory team believes?
I think it's going to depend on what the medical advisory team uh comes up with. But I I think having, don't want to have too many options, because that will convolute things. So I I think there's, you know, there's a at least two, and then probably likely two. I think there's there's the DESI guidance that's out there, and I I think that people are getting a little confused with the word choice. It's it's still highly recommended by DESI. Um, you know, so I I think that, and then there's the, you know, there's the um AAPC, the American Association of Pediatricians, and CDC, they're saying fully mask, and then there's DESI, which is a little more uh, uh, you know, less less stringent on the masking. So maybe having a a policy on each one that's less stringent, one that's uh more in line with that to give the school committee options, and then getting the feedback. And if there's a combination of the two that the school committee would recommend, we could do that as well. So just think it's important to, um, you know, there there's people that are um, you know, very passionate about this, and and it's it's very important, and it involves the safety of four thousand people that come here every day and our guests. But um, you know, there's a lot to consider, and you know, there's a lot of people that want to be heard, and and certainly there's a process. And and the thing I have is COVID, you know, we're in year three here, it seems, so it's it's uh, you know, a day in COVID is like a a month in the old days, where so much changes, so much create, you know, people send me an article, I get a hundred articles a day on on either side of masking. So I know as much about masking right now, I think, as I did about uh HVAC systems last year. So, you know, and and not to put it lightly, but it it's serious. We're taking it seriously. But that that that's why I laid out the process tonight, because I want people to know that we've never rushed into to major decisions, or at least, you know, all of last year. And again, we had a lot more than we than are on our plate this year. That's why I started off with the with the piece about sports, because I think we can all relate that just nothing better than going out and watching the kids play or playing playing a play in the theater, you know, and and all that's on the table right now. So I think, you know, I want I want to just keep that in mind, that the year is still going to start off positive. We're back to school, we're five days, you know, a lot of those rituals, no matter what school committee decides on masking, are going to return. So, you know, I think we do this uh process, it's important. And I also want to accentuate all the exciting and cool things that we're coming back to that we were robbed of early last year. And so I think that, you know, I think it's important to keep that on the front burner as well. There's a lot of of things that we did not have coming in the last year that we already have back. And, you know, certainly, I want to be excited about that.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
And and Superintendent Burkhead had said, um, as well, Peter, you know, there's there's been meetings with local school committees and uh superintendents as well. Senator Cole and I met with uh Superintendent Burkhead and um school committee members and superintendents from a couple of other um area uh towns earlier today. And I think that that conversation that we have across the folks or is going to be very important to so that we um, now that we have to follow what other towns do, but at least give us the ability to get that feedback and that input, why they made a certain decision, and how it could either benefit us or harm us in whatever um decision process we ultimately make. Uh, any other questions for Superintendent Burkhead?
I just have a a comment, just um, just a clarification that, because as of right now, because of the way we voted last, you know, last school year, masks is masks are still required, correct?
Correct. So we have a poll.
Sorry, sorry, guys. Nope, that's, I'll refer to you, Mr. Long, you have the uh, you have the gavel on when it comes to policy.
Um, so yeah, and and Mr. Gates actually pointed this out last week. Um, there is a policy in place that right now states that masks are required inside all school buildings. So as part of that conversation, on the sixteenth and again on the thirtieth, we might have to revisit that policy, depending on or modify that policy based on the decision we ultimately make.
Okay, thank you.
I forget the numbers, but it are the letters, but it starts EC, and there's three more after it. I I can get it for you if you need it, Jen. Okay, thank you, Superintendent Burkhead.
Thank you.
All right, uh, next, under the leadership reports, is uh Dr. Dutch, Director of Business and Finance.
Evening. Um, going to share my screen um to provide you with an update on where we are in the MSBA Hathaway-Cushing uh project. I presented back in April uh regarding the process. So much of what you see here will be similar, um, but just giving you uh information on where we are in relation to the timelines that have been required. So as you know, we're in the eligibility period that runs until the uh end of July of twenty-twenty-three. So that two-hundred-and-seventy-day clock began ticking on July first, uh, so from July first until March twenty-eighth. We have a a series of steps that we've got to go through and uh certain thresholds we've got to meet. The first of those is initial compliance certification. It's basically uh an assurance from the Town of Situ at the school committee and the superintendent that we will follow the guidelines of the MSBA. That was due June July thirtieth. We completed and submitted on July nineteenth. The next is the establishment of a school building committee. That is due August thirtieth. We have solicited uh participants for that committee, received applicants, and uh letters of invitation. Uh, if they haven't gone out already, uh today, we'll be going out this week um via email as well as uh traditional mail to notify those those people that are on the committee. Once that committee is uh in place, we'll we'll put that list together and send that to uh the MSBA for their receipt, so we should have no problem meeting the August thirtieth deadline there. Next is uh the local authorization of funding. It's actually the last item that we have to do. But because of the timing of our town meeting, it is actually the next thing that we've done. Uh, the Fall Town Meeting is in November, I think it's November fifteenth this fall. Uh, so we have to put together the article, and that needed to be due by August tenth to the town. The language for that vote has to be approved by the MSBA, so we had to get that to them. Uh, we received their approval this morning on the language that was submitted, and we've now submitted the article language to the town. So uh we are voting uh to authorize the appropriation of one-point-one million dollars for the feasibility study and the schematic uh design. Uh, and hopefully that passes at town meeting in November, and that will will allow us to at least take that step towards uh moving forward into the feasibility study. The next steps still to be done are the educational profile questionnaire. That has two parts. One is an enrollment form, which identifies what our current enrollment is and what we anticipate the enrollment to be projected in the next several years. That's in process and should be done sometime next week. And then the second part of that is the um enrollment study. Uh, and then we certify that enrollment. So we we've got to take a look at uh what we what we're planning to design the enrollment for um in this new building, or uh that may be a combined building, and then uh look at the study from from that was done previously. Uh, we've got to conduct some meetings related to that and provide certification. So that's due September thirtieth, uh the first piece. The second, uh, the second part is due December thirtieth. And then finally, the maintenance and capital planning uh document, that's due within a hundred and eighty days, also December thirtieth. That is uh a document that takes a look at our emphasis on uh capital planning, that we we have a process in place uh in the school district and in the town. And then we also have a maintenance plan with demonstrated processes uh that have been ongoing over the last few years, as well as uh moving forward in the future. And that's due on December thirtieth, and we'll get that get started on that shortly. So just uh again, to recap, the important dates within the eligibility period, you've got the uh certification, which was due the thirtieth. You see it's completed. School Building Committee due on the thirtieth of August, that's completed, or will be uh this week. And then the remaining items with the town vote is due by March twentieth, twenty-eighth. We'll have it uh by November fifteenth. So what happens after we've completed those items is they would be reviewed, and we'd be invited into the feasibility phase, at which point we would begin the process of selecting an owner-project manager, uh does an architect, um and begin a a more detailed feasibility study that would have to be completed by July of twenty-twenty-three. And that's that's the that's the time where they would make a decision on which which uh project to move forward with. Would we look at a renovation of the Hathaway? Or would we look at a renovation in addition to the Hathaway School? Or would we look at building a brand-new Hathaway? Or potentially a brand-new single school combining Hathaway and Cushing? So that all comes out of the feasibility study, and we'll we'll take a little bit of uh time. That'll be the bulk of probably a year and a half of our work in in just making those determinations. So that's the um, that's the presentation. So I'll stop sharing as soon as I can uh find where to do that here on my screen.
Dr. Dutch, if you go right to the top, it'll say something to the effect of stop sharing. I can do it for you.
Thanks.
And Dr. Dutch, well, that's happening. I have a quick question for you. So currently, our school building subcommittee is made up of Janice Lindblom and Michael Hayes. Um, obviously, we need to replace Mike on that committee. Um, I think you said that the overall building committee will go out to the MSBA later this week. Is that something we can modify um after?
Yes, we.
Or is that something that we, okay?
We can modify it down the road, and and at this point, we would leave Mr. Hayes's name off of it, um, where he's not a committee member any longer, and then we can add somebody later.
Okay, I just want to make sure we don't miss any deadline, and if we needed to include it in the the meeting next week that we we worried. So you have it in plenty of time for the sixteenth, but we'll have to talk about um subcommittee liaison positions at some point anyways, since we have a new member. So if we can wait, then I'm fine doing so.
Yep, we can.
All right, so at this point, um, I'll open it up to the committee if they have any questions for Dr. Dutch.
Um, but thanks, Dr. Dutch, that's great. Um, I guess just one general question, do you, are there any, um, I I think that you you stated already, but are there any deadlines that you think are going to be difficult for us to reach? Or any, you know, heavy lifting that that we're going to need to do as a, you know, as any one individual group in order to to meet to meet this stated guideline?
Well, I I think the the educational uh the educational program Well, I I think the the educational or the educational program and the enrollment documents. Will take some time and be challenging only because we've got to get information from so many different places. And in some cases where we're collecting census data and that sort of thing that's going to help us with those enrollments. And they're, you know, they're readily available, but you know, we're it's much is based on projection. So as far as meeting the timeline, I don't I don't see an issue in doing that, but that's probably the heaviest lift in all of this.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for keeping on top of it and keeping us informed of it. It's very helpful.
Sure.
That was my question too, Peter, was more about enrollment and projected enrollments and and more of like when we'll get an update or if you have any data on that to present to us at a kind of near future meeting or where we're at with enrollments.
Yeah, there's there are two parts to this. The first is simply a survey and that's where we're looking at census data and that's due August. That's due September thirtieth. So I I can see sharing that with you sometime prior to that. And then the the component that's due in December, which is more of a look at enrollment programmatically. That that we can do that sometime in December if you'd like. And the the capital and maintenance plan will be done will have to be done by then as well.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question about the feasibility study. You gave a price of one point one. Is there, can you tell us how you came up with that amount? Did you consult with one of our previous feasibility study companies?
I I did it in two different ways. One is I I did look at the cost of the feasibility study. For the Gates Middle School. And what what the actual cost was rather than the projected cost. And then I also got a listing of other schools that have recently completed feasibility studies through the MSBA. That were similar in scope to our project based on the size of their their school. And what they were looking to do because we potentially are combining two schools. That expands the scope versus just looking at construction of a new building. And the need to do that. So I I I looked at all of that data. Some of those were as recent as two thousand and nineteen, some were as far back as two thousand and sixteen. And then so I looked at the escalation of costs over time and came up with that dollar amount. Knowing that if we didn't use all of it, it could be rolled into the construction project itself. Whereas if we didn't didn't secure enough funding, there's no way to go back and and ask for more.
Great, thank you for explaining that.
Yep.
I have one more question too. I don't know if I'm jumping ahead too far, but at what point will the grade configuration of the school impact the cost of the project? By impacting what type of design we need or will it not matter at all? Because Janice and I were involved in so much work with that, but you know, it was all just sort of.
Well, it definitely will matter. But those those calculations and determinations will be made during the feasibility study.
Okay.
And and that's kind of what will help us make our decisions as to which is our our first, second and third choice if there are multiple options. But ultimately, it's the MSBA that will make that determination. But but part of that determination is is based on cost is based on cost and enrollment. You know, they're they're not going to spend fifty million dollars for a school of two hundred and fifty students. You know, they're looking for some some economy of scale by by doing what they're trying to do and and spending the money.
So you think they're going to drive how almost so maybe I so they're going to almost drive the most cost effective configuration of the elementary level buildings.
That will be one of the components. I mean, that's not the sole sole component that that leads to a decision. We have input in that based on a lot of different criteria that is determined through that feasibility study. Because they'll be they'll do a lot of surveys to identify desires, strengths, weaknesses of the community and a lot of looking at a lot of projections.
Okay, and they'll do that for us?
The the.
That's great, because that's a heated community argument, but it would be great to have a an impartial body making an assessment for us that we could take into consideration in addition to community input and.
Yeah, I mean, I I look at the owner project manager and the the architect as the facilitator to helping us make the decision. And that's really their role initially.
Yeah, okay, because I feel like we're really, I mean, I don't know, I'm just talking out of off the top of my head, but even going based on our past subcommittee that we had on this, it really was very split in in terms of data that we gathered and information and then in addition to factual things, just opinion on what people preferred. For whatever reasons they had of their own, which were all valid. So I think it's like one of those tough calls. So to have a third party input from a professional status, I think might be helpful.
Yep, I agree a hundred percent.
That was so long ago, Nicole.
I know, but I don't like forever.
It does, but I don't think much would change.
I agree, I agree, yeah.
Yeah, what the configuration should look like and what the community wants. I I think it would the results, if we did any other surveys, it would it would be the same.
Yep.
Yeah. Alright.
Okay, there's another question. Thank you, Dr. Dutch.
But you're welcome. Can I make a comment, please? Yeah, so I just want to thank Dr. Dutch for that work and update. I think you'll see as we'll be again with our theme of transparency and just being out in front with this because we want public support, we want feedback. I want to thank all the folks that volunteered to be on the committee. There's some really highly talented and and smart people in the town of Situate and they rose to the occasion. So we've gotten multiple people with architectural or design experience that wanted to volunteer to be on the building committee. So we're in really good hands with that. So I want to thank those people as well and you know, we'll be making that public once we let those folks know that they're they're on the committee. So I think that's a good start. And I also want to let the folks know out here tonight that, you know, we need your support for that first vote in town meeting. It's one point one million dollars, but if that doesn't go through, then you know, the thing could be dead in the water. So anybody that's walked through these two schools or had their children go through there. Or is any knowledge of of buildings and that kind of thing and the cost to maintain and fix old buildings? And we'll make a case for this as well as the thing rolls along, but the opportunity of the the reimbursement from the state to get this thing done versus the amount of money we keep throwing in to keep those those things, you know, just the roofs and the, you know, ceilings and the HVAC that we just did. And luckily we got money from, you know, the CARES Act to to update our our older buildings. But this is a great opportunity for us. I can't understate that enough. So just all the folks that are out there watching tonight, if we can get your support, whether you have children in those schools or not. It increases the property value of everyone's homes in the community to have better facilities for our children. So and again, we'll we'll make our case more specifically as time goes on and I just wanted to get that out there tonight that I appreciate the public support on that.
Great, thank you Superintendent Burkett. This is the first and only opportunity for public comment in tonight's meeting. Before we do get into it, I just want to make two quick comments. So the first is I've gotten a number of phone calls and people have reached out regarding posts online and in the media regarding Freedom of Information Act requests. So kind of going along with the same theme of transparency as Superintendent Burkett had mentioned. I just want to make it clear that yes, the school administration has received a number of Freedom of Information Act requests. It's a legal right for anyone to submit. And the administration and the school committee are steadfast in the stance that we will answer every request as it is received. We will answer it fully and provide all the information as part of that request. Or a public board that represents a community and a public school. And that that transparency and that trust that we expect to have, but we want to have with the town is something that, you know, obviously we want to continue and will do so either by answering those requests or if people do have general questions, they can feel free to either email the school committee, email the administration and we'll be more than happy to answer any of the questions that that do come our way. I know Superintendent Burkett had also mentioned earlier. On next Monday, we will be having a meeting specifically related to the return to school. And we'll we we will allow all public comment to to come in at that time as well as any emails received into the email address that Superintendent Burkett had mentioned and to the school committee. Again, we want to be as open and transparent with the entire town throughout this entire process because it's as Superintendent Burkett said, this impacts close to four thousand people going through our schools on a daily basis. And we want to continue to make sure everyone stays safe, is able to enjoy that time as we as we start school again. And the last point is, I know we're also scheduled to have a curriculum discussion in the near future, either on August thirtieth or a subsequent meeting. It's another topic that's come up over the past couple of months. We'll provide that, have that discussion at a future meeting. That being said, anything that's under the purview of the school committee is fair game for public comment. So anything that I just mentioned, people can discuss tonight if they had a comment or reach out to us afterwards or in a future meeting. I'll try to get everyone in the order that I saw the hand get raised and there's people. As I ask people to unmute, if they can just say their name, either address or school affiliation for the record, I'd appreciate it. And the first person is Ms. Fires.
Hi, I'm Sarah Spires. I live at twenty seven Summit Ave. I'm going to go to Situate High School. And I'm the founder of the Situate Girls Golf Team. I just wanted to take a moment to thank everybody involved. The athletic director, the school administration, superintendent Burkett, the school committee and supporting parents. This is an amazing opportunity and I appreciate everything everyone has done to make this happen. I promise we will make Situate proud. Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck this year.
Thank you.
Next up was Jennifer O'Neil.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, so I am Jennifer O'Neil, two seventy-nine Gannett Road. I am actually speaking also about girls golf. And I applaud Ms. Spires and the girls that came forward to put this team together. I believe it's over two years ago now, but I feel these girls are being punished because there was no policy in place. There was inconsistencies at Situate High School. There have been various teams and clubs that have started and some teams have had to do one year, some teams have had to do two years and some teams have had to do three years before they could become a varsity sport. I understand there's a new administration and that they will be, you know, moving forward. You voted them as a varsity sport. But this team should not have to raise thousands and thousands of dollars to compete this year. That money should be found in the school budget. This group came before shore in December. They presented us with a grant request. We vetted the entire process with the former athletic director. We were told during the grant meeting that funds would be found for the team in the twenty-one twenty-two school year. We went ahead and granted the girls team money so they could go ahead and have a team for the previous school year that just ended. And now they're being told that they now have to raise thousands of dollars over the next two years. I do realize you are hoping to get it in for, you know, fiscal twenty-three. But this money needs to be found for these girls for this year. We were talking previously about football banners and letting that boosters team raise thousands of dollars at a football game. These girls need that money. They need it now and you need to find it for them. I also want to mention that the three teams that I've seen come through Situate High School over the previous eight years have all been girls teams, girls volleyball, girls gymnastics and girls golf. They were the teams that had to find their own money and start their teams. Notice girls is in front of every single one of them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fire. Next up was Jennifer De Sabatino.
Good evening and thank you. I wanted to just, before you start deliberating next week on the opening of school. Just say that I hope that the deliberation is based on peer reviewed scientific data from medical experts who are either in the field of epidemiology, public health or critical care providers. You know, a dentist is not really qualified to comment on this. They have the better understanding than some of us. But they're not experts. I have two parents, one who's professor of public health nursing and one who is a nuclear engineer. And both were very clear on where their circles of expertise were. And if you tried to attribute something else to them, they were very clear. So I don't trust people who are telling me information that's supposed to be scientific information outside of their field of expertise. Everybody who works in the medical field is not an expert on epidemiology, on public health and the transmission of disease. And the other only other thing I would say as you go forward with this is the mask optional is a false choice because if we give students or parents the right to give their students the right to choose whether they wear a mask. They're taking away my child's right to be safe in school. And that's just as simple as it is. It's that's the same reason we don't allow smoking on school campuses. That's why there are certain laws that are for everybody's health. And I certainly understand as not only a mother but a teacher how frustrating and irritating and it does dampen the experience. And that's something we can acknowledge and deal with without jumping to the conclusion that we need to take masks off or that anybody has should take their mask off or be allowed to in a school setting where they're going to be in closed quarters and I've taught, I I teach in a classroom where we have the desks separate, they're closed quarters. And they're less closed quarters than they used to be, but they're still closed quarters and you're in there for hours a day. And it's just not reasonable to expect that there will not be transmission if masks come off. And that's the best information that I've heard from people who are actually experts, not random things online, but from epidemiologists, public health experts and doctors and nurses who work in critical care force. That's and and I really hope that that's what we're basing our decision on, not the loudest squeaking wheel or you know, someone who has, you know, a half baked, false equivalency, non peer reviewed article. About your teeth looking bad after wearing a mask. That's just not, that's not reasonable evidence to put forward to support that position. And and I get a little bit upset about it because you're literally, it's really bad in the South now. There, it would be fantastical to assume that some of that isn't going to come up here because this this is definitely this wave is of the non vaccinated and no kids under twelve are vaccinated. So that's whom we are putting in danger. Even if I I'm vaccinated, I won't get very sick probably. But if it gets transmitted to my son, he can. And we don't know what the long haul, I mean, we do know that there are long haul symptoms. We know that some of those long term symptoms are very severe. Not only adults and kids and there's more evidence coming out. We don't know yet a hundred percent. There's more evidence coming out now. That children are far more are reacting far more negatively to this. They're getting hospitalized. They're getting put on ventilators. At much higher rates than in the first or second waves of the infection. So this is it it just boggles my mind that that the fact that it's irritating is a reason we're going to try to give people an opportunity not to wear them. So that's it. I just, yes, I I it is a very intensely emotional issue because I think some people don't seriously take the life and death implications of this and I'm not trying to scare anybody. I want I want this to become a much more manageable disease, so we don't have to live like this anymore. But if we continue to play games, this is going to be a problem for a long time. And that is what the experts are telling us. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I'm sorry if I missed it. Do you mind just hitting your address or school affiliation for the record?
Have to raise your hand again, Mr. Sabatino.
There we go. Yeah, I'm sorry. I had muted myself and then I couldn't unmute myself. Sorry, I apologize, Jen. Fifty-seven. Tino, I live at Two Trees Lane in Situate. There we go, yeah, I'm sorry, I had muted myself and then I couldn't unmute myself. Sorry, I apologize, Jen fifty seven, I live at two trees lane in Situate.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, going through all the pictures to try to find you. Um, uh, next up was Lori Wethrow.
Thank you, Mike, Lori Wethrow, sixty two Anne Rinald Road. I'm glad to hear that in the next couple of weeks, we're going to be talking about curriculum. And I just wanted to ask, we've had so much going on in the past year with new administration, superintendent, assistant superintendent, and new principals. I just wanted to know if we could, or ask that in those conversations, if we could please have a discussion about where our school district is ranking right now. Um, I did look recently where it showed that we were a hundred and two in school rankings in the state. So I just wanted to um, put it out there, if we could maybe have that on the agenda. I don't know if that's accurate or not, that was the US News reports, um, that I just looked at last week. So I was just hoping that we could have a little look at that. I know at one point we did get down to thirty eight, which was wonderful for Situate. But when I just looked last week, it looked like we were at a hundred and two. So I'm hoping that we could put that into one of our future agenda items. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Wethrow. Uh, next up was Paul Scott.
Uh, thank you, Chairman Long, um, ninety-three, Los Angeles, I have a, two children that go to Cushing. My, my questions about the curriculum issue, if I remember during last month's meeting, uh, in your review of Superintendent Burkett, you had mentioned that there was going to be an upcoming discussion about curriculum, and in all honesty, I thought that discussion was going to occur tonight. Um, it would seem to me that any discussion about the upcoming curriculum should happen sooner rather than later. Um, I know you just mentioned at the top of um, this segment of the meeting that there was going to be a meeting on the curriculum. Do you know when that meeting is going to occur?
Uh, I think right now we're scheduling it for August thirtieth, uh, Superintendent Burkett, correct me if I'm wrong there. Um, and there's been discussions on when we were going to schedule it, and we're just giving the new assistant superintendent and her, and our staff time to put that um, discussion together, so we can have a full discussion and not um, you know, be missing information.
Okay, um, go, sorry.
Sorry, Mr. Scott, I just wanted to uh, interject real quick, um, to answer your question and to follow up with Ms. Wethrow's question. Yeah, we have looked at those US reports, it's part of, uh, we, we dove deep in that, certainly we're not happy with that or satisfied, and we're excited to start talking about curriculum instead of all the things we had to talk about last year that were extremely necessary. Um, and to your point, Mr. Scott, uh, certainly the earlier the better, when we talk curriculum. I think Mr. Long's points, uh, well taken, that we are meeting with our leadership team this week, as I mentioned in the retreat. So there'll be a lot of conversations about that, Ms. Driscoll is uh, a month into the job and working extremely hard. So I want to give her some time to get acclimated, to dig into things, and we look forward to not only having just one report August thirtieth. I think that will be a main thread of, you know, a lot of our conversations and reports out in the future are about, you know, our education of our children, where we stand as a town, what we're doing about the things that aren't going so well, uh, being clear and honest about what those things are, and also, you know, sharing and being excited about the things that we do very well. So again, like anything else, we, we need to be transparent about that stuff. We didn't, weren't able to talk about it enough last year. Um, but we, we do, um, you know, to promise and, and that that's certainly something that should be a norm at these meetings and, and will be soon. So thank you for your patience with it.
Uh, next up, and I apologize if I butchered your last name, Barbara Waichardt.
Hi, I'm Barbara Waichardt, and my address is ten Cherry Lane. Um, I just wanted to say when we're considering masking policies for school, to please, please, please keep in mind that there are kids who have done everything possible to keep themselves safe. They've been vaccinated, but they still have immune conditions that they would absolutely benefit from having their peers masked, and it's pretty disheartening to some of the teenagers to hear people saying, well, who cares, they can just stay home. You know, it's hard enough for the teenagers already struggling with maybe being at higher risk. Um, so just when you're making policies to kind of consider those kids that have done what was recommended by their doctors, but are still at risk. Thank you.
Great, thank you for your comment. Um, next up is Dan Driscoll.
Hi, I'm Jen Driscoll, nine Fields, only. I know there's a lot more to the conversation about masking, and I'm looking forward to that discussion on Monday. I was curious to, to learn from the school committee and from Mr. Burkett, why that meeting can't be in person next Monday. Thanks.
Um, so I can start on that. So um, one of the benefits of having these meetings remotely is you can have more people attend. Um, we have been working with SCTV to try to have technology in place so that we can have people join a Zoom or be in person, which would allow us, um, people that, that do attend or can't attend in person and attend remotely to be able to hear what's going on. Um, I know there's been some issues with some of the board of selectmen meetings, and we constantly heard when we were in person in the past at the high school library that people would watch our meeting after the fact, and they couldn't hear a word that was said. Um, so any type of discussion um, in the near future, I think it's probably going to be remote, but that will give more people the opportunity to attend the meeting, and then um, you know, anytime there's a public comment, they'll be able to weigh in without any problems. But we are looking to go uh, in person again, once we have the right technology in place, and, and continue to have a, um, as many people attend our meetings as, as want to. Uh, seeing no other people with their hand raised, I'll end public comment for tonight's meeting. Uh, thank you, everyone who did um, speak up. I took notes on everything that was said, so I'll make sure we, we consider all of the points made. Items that they, they were associated with. Um, so next on the agenda is the acceptance of minutes. Uh, since we have our minutes from July, the July nineteenth minute uh, meeting in our backup. Um, so if there are no questions or comments on the minutes, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the meeting minutes of July nineteenth, twenty twenty-one.
I'll second.
Alright, thank you. Uh, so we'll do a roll call vote, Brenda Lini?
Yes.
Uh, Long, yes, Gates?
Yes.
And Limbo?
Yes.
Alright, thank you all. Um, so I don't believe we had any correspondence in our backup. Um, so next on the agenda was our warrant, I believe there was a warrant that Dr. Dutch had to read into the minutes.
Yes, there are actually two warrants. Uh, the first is warrant S two one zero seven two two in the amount of one hundred and eighty one thousand eight hundred and five dollars and forty six cents, signed by committee member Gates. Uh, those items of significant dollar amounts uh, were out of the revolving account for school lunch. Nine thousand three hundred and seventeen dollars and ninety-five cents from, to Tyler Tech, which is the uh, accounting system for the cafeteria. And then out of our local funds uh, for curriculum, eleven thousand eight hundred and sixty-two dollars for Explore Learning. Sixty-eight thousand five hundred and twenty-three dollars for our bus lease. That is the lease for seven of our fourteen buses. Uh, and then central administration, thirty-seven thousand two hundred and seventy-four dollars and twenty-two cents. That's again Tyler Tech, that is the uh, accounting system for budgeting. Um, and we, the, the town bills us for that, that is a town, town expense that we pay a portion of. So that's the school portion. Um, and then for IT contract services, twenty-five thousand nine hundred and seventy-six dollars and seventy cents from three different vendors uh, for a variety of uh, software contracts that we have. The second warrant is warrant S two one zero seven two nine, the amount of two hundred and fifty one thousand three hundred and twenty-seven dollars and thirty-four cents. Again, signed by committee member Gates. Uh, large ticket items, private school tuition, eleven thousand nine hundred and twenty-seven dollars and fifty-three cents to Clark School. Uh, collaborative tuition, one hundred and sixty one thousand five hundred and fifty-three dollars and sixty-eight cents. That's combined between uh, the South Shore Collaborative and Reed's Collaborative in Middleborough. And the line item of curriculum, twenty-four thousand dollars for Lexia, which is a reading program. And then in central administration, twenty thousand eight hundred and seven dollars and four cents uh, for Classlink, which is a, another software application, induction programs and memberships for administration. So those are the uh, large ticket items on that budget. So again, that uh, was two hundred and fifty one thousand three hundred and twenty-seven dollars and thirty-four cents. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have about any of them.
Uh, are there any questions for Dr. Dutch? Okay, uh, thank you for the, reading of them, Dr. Dutch. Uh, moving on, is there any other business that the school committee wants to bring up as part of this meeting?
Mike, can I make just a quick comment? Um, I know you, earlier in the meeting, you just talked about the process for replacing Mike Hayes, but I just wanted to publicly thank Mr. Hayes for his year, decades of service to the school committee and the Situate Public Schools. Um, he dedicated a large portion of his life to um, to the kids in the community. And um, you know, it's, it really stinks the way his career ended, but um, you know, that's in the past. But I, again, want to just thank him for all his years of service.
Well said, I think he had thirty-eight years on the school committee, and that experience and, and knowledge will be um, well missed.
Yes, it will.
Uh, so as we previously stated, uh, we will be having a meeting on uh, August sixteenth regarding our mask policy and our return to school. Um, our next meeting after that will be August thirtieth, then we have several meetings in September for the um, appointment of a new school committee member. Um, at this point, this concludes the uh, public section of our meeting. We do have an executive session that we will enter um, and not return to open meeting. Um, so at this point, I will entertain a motion uh, to enter executive session.
Still moved.
A second?
I'll do a roll call vote, uh, Long, yes, Gates?
Yes.
Limbo?
Yes.
And Brenda Lini?
Yes.
Alright, thank you for everyone who attended tonight's meeting. Um, have a good rest of your night.